Hey, this is Malika of Evanston Live TV and we have with us today returning guest Leslie Williams. Yes, this woman is always on the scene and in the know and I appreciate her so much. She's she's one of those community members who really cares and she lets you know what's going on even you know because we all can't stay on top of everything. But she lets us know about some pretty important issues that go on in the city of Evanston. So please welcome back Leslie Williams.
Thank you so much, Malika. That's really, that's really kind of you. And you know, like all of us, I try to stay on top of things. But it really does take a village to stay on top of everything and to really make sure that everyone in the city knows what they need to know to make, to make appropriate decisions.
Yes, we first came to know you from the Evanston Public Library situation, but we won't talk about that because I know how it ended. And yeah, we, yeah, we want to talk about that for, for legal reasons. You're, you know, you can't really say too much on that. But we're here for what's going on right now.
Yes, yes, we are.
So, the city manager position.
The city manager position.
I think every week someone is asking me, so what's going on with the city manager position? What, what's, what's happening? What's, what's going on? And I haven't had an answer because I haven't heard anything. I haven't heard of candidates or, you know, they've real, well, we heard that they started the search, but we never heard anything else after that. And so, you know, I'm just thinking, well, they're not going to do what they did last time and not tell the public until they come down to two candidates.
And yet.
And yet, we're on the track to doing the exact same thing. And you would think after hearing all the complaints because of how they handled the first round back in January, that they would say, you know what? Let's do something different this time so that, you know, the public feels like they're included and they have a say. And we know at the end of the day, city council has the final say, but at least make the community feel like they're a part. So please fill us in, Leslie.
Sure. So just wanted to step back a little bit and just remind people, first of all, why this is so important and what the previous city manager searches have been like. So Evanston has a strong city manager, city, strong city manager, weak mayor system, which doesn't mean that the individual mayor is weak, but that much of the power that in other communities lies with the mayor really lies with the city manager. And I think that's really crucial to understand because many of the complaints that people have had in the past about how things have happened in Evanston, how certain positions have been filled, racial equity issues. A lot of that really does rest with the city manager and the city manager has a lot of power and control over every aspect of life in Evanston. So if you live in Evanston and if you have concerns about affordable housing or about how policing works or any of these other issues, you really need to care about who the city manager is. And we know that in the past, we have had city managers that you and I and many of us feel did not live up to the values of Evanston. And we've had city managers who have been openly accused of being racist and who have involved the city in numerous extremely expensive lawsuits over racial discrimination in various departments of the city. So again, the city manager is totally crucial to life in Evanston. So as we know, we had Wally Bobkowitz, I won't go into that too much, but some not so great things happened under Bobkowitz's watch. And he left and we inherited Erica Storey. There was a push to simply elevate her to the city manager position from an interim position without any public process. But fortunately, for because of a lot of public pressure from many different organizations and many individuals, the city did hold a nationwide search, brought in two black female candidates who many of us felt were very, very impressive, but ended up going with Erica anyway. And there was, there was a lot of discomfort over the way that process happened. For one thing, there were what were supposed to be public forums where groups of 10 to 12 people would get to sit down and interview the candidates, but they were not allowed to ask their own questions. They were given a sheet of questions that they were required to ask. They were not allowed to ask the questions that they actually thought was important, which made it really clear to many of us that this was not truly a process where they were concerned or interested in the public input. That it was almost an exercise, a show, a theater of inclusivity and asking for the public's opinion without really doing so. Then, as we know, thanks to some other unpleasant things that have happened in Evanston recently, Erica Storey left the city. And so we started a new process back in, I think it started around November. And many of us were concerned that some of the same patterns we were seeing were coming up again, that the public was not really being informed on where the process was going. But the city did have a city manager recruitment website and it did list the anticipated dates for interviews and when applications are being sent out and the dates for a public town hall and for forums. And they did with the forums, although they did give some of us who were on those citizen panels, and I was one of the people who was on a citizen panel. They did give us some suggested ideas for questions, but they did not require us to ask that those questions we could ask our own. And they also, the panels with citizens included business owners and people that worked in nonprofit and social service agencies. So there was at least an idea that they were really including people more, although we had to pressure them to release the videos of some of those forums. So some of the stakeholder forums with the public, initially the city did not want to release so that everyone would be able to see those interviews, but they did eventually release those. Then came down to two people. There was concern that we did not have a female finalist. I mean, there was a feeling that it was really important to at least have an idea that we were advancing the candidacies of competent women as we had had in the previous search with Erica Storey. Came down to two men. After all of these public, the town halls and the interview panels and entries with city council, there is definitely a feeling that one of them expressed the values of Evanston in terms of transparency and racial equity better than the other. But unfortunately, he decided to take another job. So then the process was reopened in February. And there had been a lot of discontent with the previous firm, felt that they were not that well organized, that they weren't really doing the type of job that they wanted. So they've started with a new firm and that was really the last anyone heard. So that was in mid-February. And it's now mid-April. And between mid-February and mid-April, there has not been any release of information from the city council or from the mayor on how the process was going. And so like you, I was wondering and everyone was wondering, why aren't they talking about the process? Have they sent out applications? Have they gotten any applications back? Where did they post the applications? What does the applicant pool look like? What is the timetable for doing interviews and for bringing people in? No information whatsoever since February on where this was going and what was happening. And if you looked at the city manager recruitment page, the last time, as I said, it had listed dates for sending out applications, dates for the town halls, et cetera. Absolutely nothing. It simply says that information will be posted when it's available, just a two-sentence disclaimer saying we have no information to release. And then kind of through the grapevine and through a couple of city council members mentioning things at their ward meetings, we learned just last week that in fact, the firm had sent out application, had sent out, posted a job description, had received applications and had in fact started interviewing with the city council with absolutely no notification to the public whatsoever. And so we've now found out that the recruitment field found 75 candidates. We don't know anything about the candidates. We don't know how many women there are, how many people of color, but we just know that there were 75 candidates. We know that the firm sent nine resumes to the city council on March 28th. Again, there was no notice of this at the time. And that five of them have come to Evanston the first week in April and were interviewed by the city council in executive session during the first week in April. And now on April 22nd, we expect that several candidates will be coming back for second interviews with the city council. And there will be some kind of public process, we don't know what, some kind of public process in early May. And what I find really shocking about this, I mean, first, the fact that they didn't tell us anything from February until now. And finally, that the only reason we even know this much is because Jonathan Nusma, the fourth ward city council member, after I spoke at city council last week saying, what's up with the city manager search? And after the Community Alliance for Better Government sent out an email to all of our supporters saying, you really need to ask your city council member what's going on. Jonathan Nusma, on his own, decided at his fourth ward meeting last night to announce the timetable and to announce what's going on. And I salute him. I think it's really great that he did that. But why is it up to just one city council member to do this? Why didn't the mayor make this announcement? Why didn't the full city council make this announcement? And why did Jonathan Nusma not do it until after we put pressure on them? So it just feels as though they really have not learned their, their lesson that unless the public, unless people like you and me, unless Community Alliance for Better Government and Reclaim and these other organizations pressure them, they don't seem to feel that they have any responsibility to keep the public informed about the search for the single most important position in Evanston City Government.
Wow. Girl, you laid it out. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. You laid it out. And yes, and it does pose the question like, what, well, one, why did council member Nusma wait? And in my, my thinking is because you did question it at the last city council at public comments. So I think Nusma kind of on that fence, he wants to please certain council members and then, but he doesn't want to look like the bad guy to his constituents. So he's kind of like, you know, he's caught in the middle there. But I'm glad he did say something though.
He did say something. And the last time, when we had concerns about this during the last search, the Community Alliance for Better Government and Reclaim actually did a press conference with the Daily Northwestern and Patch and the Roundtable. And after that, Nusman again was the one who responded to our concerns and actually published more information about it. So, but again, why is he the only one? You know, why is it up to just one council member to, to do that? And you know, yes, obviously I think that he should have done it earlier, but it isn't really that I think it's up to him. I mean, I think the council as a whole should be doing this, that this should just be their way of doing business that, okay. You know, we've told people that we have a search firm, but we should tell people that we've gotten applications. We should tell people that the search is going on. Because you know, if we, you know, we talk a lot about trust and bad morale. If you want the public to trust you and if you want the public to have good morale and have confidence, you have to let people know what you're doing. And you know, obviously they can't provide details about the interviews. I mean, their reasons for executive session, but they can tell people what is going on, what the process is. And when we have reached out to Daniel Biss and when we've reached out to other members on the council, they've simply said, well, we'll let you know when there's something to tell. And I think getting applications and having gone through two rounds of interviews is something.
Something to tell.
Yes.
Absolutely. Do you, what are your thoughts on why the last candidate did not take the job? What are your thoughts? Because I'm wondering if it ties in with now they're not going to tell the public anything. They're not going to give updates on anything.
Yeah.
I'm wondering.
I think, you know, there are definitely candidates who have different levels of comfort with a public process. And in fact, one of the other things that Jonathan Nusma mentioned is that one of the candidates from this current search dropped out because he or she did not want to be part of a public process. So there are definitely people that are less comfortable with that. The candidate that dropped out, Dan, Dan Ramas, I was very happy to have a chance to interview him. I mean, he struck me as a really wonderful person. And he also was the candidate that I felt was actually most open about this process and was most open, for example, to having the public involved in the process for hiring the police chief, which is another big reason we should really be concerned about the city manager search. He's a very brilliant and very qualified administrator and I think he just got a better offer. And so I don't know if it really had anything to do with the process, with the process here. But you know, I mean, I think if we have candidates like this, this phantom candidate who is not now coming back for an interview because they don't like the idea of a public process, making sure that people know that it's a public process is a really good screening tool. Because I don't want a city manager in here who does not want material to be made public, who's going to be pushing back all the time against information being made public. And that is a pattern that we're seeing far too often. I mean, not just with the city manager search, but with many other aspects of life in Evanston. I mean, it's also something that, you know, we're seeing with the whole scandal over the abuse of lifeguards at the lakefront, you know, just a resistance to making information public resistance. Not just to getting public input, because you know, it's nice to get input, but are you actually using that input? You know, another question that we had, so with the November search, there was a survey that people were invited to fill out about what they thought was important about the city manager. And there was a town hall where people could talk about what was important in getting a city manager. And this was before there were even interviews. So one of the questions that we had was, okay, the new firm didn't do that. We would hope that they were given all that information that was collected the first time and that, you know, they were using that in their search process. We don't really know that. I mean, we know that they received that information. You know, I think one question for the city council as they're doing these interviews, do they have that information in front of them? So do they have the results of that survey and the results of that town hall in front of them as they're doing these interviews? Are they keeping that top of mind? So Nusma said that they're looking for someone who has a background in nonprofit and governments and experience with budgeting. And yeah, I mean, that, that's obvious that you would expect that for someone who's going to be the main administrator for a city. But what is their view on racial equity and implementing racial equity? You know, are they willing to work with organizations like the Government Alliance for Racial Equity to make sure that all of Evanston's departments, whether it's the Human Resources Department or healthcare or policing, are actually implementing racial equity policies and racial equity tools? And what are their, what are their ways of building trust within the community? And you know, what are their plans for increasing trust and transparency? So that's what a lot of the questions from the town hall and from the survey brought up. And so it would just be nice to know that the city council is actually considering those concerns as well as simply administrative skills.
Yeah, that last firm that they had hired, one of their staff members had called to interview me about what, you know, who I thought was, what, what I was looking for in a city manager. And bottom line, I said, we need someone who actually cares.
Yes.
Who doesn't just push numbers, who actually cares. Because that's going to show in you pushing the numbers.
Yes.
It's that all of that shows up in how you genuinely care about people. And I think, you know, many would believe that we've had city managers who did not care at the end of the day.
Or they care, they care about certain people.
Certain people.
I think another question is, you know, this also goes along with public input is who has access and who doesn't have access? So, you know, remember I was talking about how they did have a forum that was representative of the wards? But each city council member got to pick who they wanted to be the representative from their ward. And you know, that makes me a little uncomfortable too, because you know, as we know, certain people tend to have better access and are listened to more by their city government and by their city council members. So you know, if it's just up to each ward, each ward, each council member to decide, you know, how are we assured that they're not simply picking people that already agree with their policies, that already agree with the way they want to see the city run? And that to me also doesn't seem like it's a truly inclusive and transparent process. And you know, one of my questions for them was, how are you going to make sure you're hearing the voices of the people who have not been heard? The people whose voices have been ignored? And I'm not really hearing in this new process that that's something that's being prioritized.
One, my alderman in regards to Evanston reparations before it was passed and her response was, well, I trust the council. Okay, but this is what the people are saying. Shouldn't we address some of these questions, these concerns? Well, I, I trust the council, so I'm going to vote however the council wants. That's very scary.
I think there is this prioritizing of collegiality and consensus. And that, you know, there are times for consensus and compromise, but if you're talking about just backbone principles, moral and ethical principles, then I don't think you should be compromising. And often the compromises are made on the backs of the people who are the most vulnerable, the people that do not have access to power. Often as we know, people of color and lower income people. And you know, I would, I guess because I try to be optimistic about human nature. There are not, I won't say there are none, but there are not too many people on the council that I would say really don't care. But I do think particularly when you're.
You're being nice.
And well, as I said, I'm trying to be. But I think when you're a new person who joins, I mean, it, you know, it's like anytime that, you know, you join a new place of work or a new organization, you may have your own ideas, but you're kind of looking around to see, okay, you know, how's this going to play with everybody else and how am I going to be accepted? And I think that that is a very strong, strong tide to push against. And even people who do have good values can kind of get sucked into that, well, you know, I, I want to be part of this consensus and you know, I want this collegiality, when in fact, we need people, we need people like Cicely Fleming, who was willing to say, no, I'm not going to go along because this is wrong and this is hurting my community. And so I would like to see a little bit more of that in all the city council members. I mean, you know, I would certainly agree that some of them have done terrific things this session. Claire Kelly, you know, mentioned about the money. She's really pushing to make sure that when the city does contracts with developers, that there's some sort of guarantee that the city will get its money back if the developer doesn't follow through on its, its agreements, which I think is extremely important. Devon, I sent Devon a note the other day because when former chief, police chief Eddington, who's currently the interim chief, was talking about using drones for surveillance and crime prevention and Devon called him on that. And you know, I'm thinking, really now in the days after George Floyd, when you know, we had a conversation about how to reduce reliance on policing, how to restructure policing, we're going to start talking about using drones on people in Evanston? And it was great to hear Devon clap back against that. So there are, you know, there are definitely moments where we're seeing city council members who do take strong stands and do keep in mind that their priorities should not be collegiality and consensus. Their priorities should be representing the interests of the people of Evanston, particularly the most vulnerable people in Evanston.
You know, it's, it's going to be interesting how this plays out with these city manager candidates. I'm concerned.
Yeah.
I, I'm, I'm really concerned and I wish more people in the community would really voice how they feel about things because what we have here in Evanston is, you know, you have certain organizations like Community Alliance for Better Government. You, you know, you have these organizations, you have individuals who are out there on their own as well, who come and speak at public comment. And it's not always about speaking at public comment, but they, they write emails, they attend their ward meetings. They're calling their council member. And sometimes they take things a step further and, and you know, reach out to people outside of Evanston to get their opinion, their thoughts or to report things. But we don't have enough and there's power in numbers. And I think with this, our city council and even the previous city council is that they're thinking, oh, it's only a few whiners.
Right.
Oh, we, we don't, we don't have to respond or answer, answer to that. So they want to see the candidates. It's only a few of them that want to see the candidates that will be the city manager running this city. We don't need to respond to that. We don't need to give them any information. We'll give them what we want to give them. But if it was more people in the community really coming forward. And, and the thing is, they do come forward, but they come to people like us to do it for them. They, they ask us to stick our necks out, out there, but they're, they're not understanding, you need to make your, your voice known. So it's not the same voice is speaking for you.
Yeah. And you do, I mean, you know, you do get the reputation as the professional gab fly or, you know, the usual suspects. And you know, you kind of can kind of see in the way that, you know, their body language when someone comes up who's a frequent speaker. You know, and a really great example of how dangerous that is. So I don't know if you read through that really shocking report on the lakefront lifeguard abuse scandal. But one of the things that really stood out for me, so there were petitions from the lifeguards to look into what was happening. And they actually cited that some of the city administration, fortunately, people that are not still with the city, just said, oh, there's always a petition going on in Evanston. You know, very dismissive, just this, well, you know, we didn't pay that much attention to that because there's always a petition going on in Evanston. You know, I think that a city, someone who's a city manager or mayor or administrator should welcome input and welcome that enough people, and in this case, a bunch of teenage girls, actually got it together to get a petition and send it around. That's something you should be paying attention to. You shouldn't just be, you shouldn't just be dismissing it as, oh, it's just these silly residents who are always unhappy about something. I mean, that more than almost anything else speaks to this level of disrespect for the public, which is, is deeply troubling. And as we see, resulted in some terrible, terrible behavior going on way too long because of this dismissiveness.
Yeah, and they're dismissive of each other on the, on the dais. I mean, just in the last meeting, council member Wen and council member Braithwaite called council member Reed stupid and, and Claire Kelly a liar. And I mean, you can go back and research, I mean, and they welcome you to research what it is that there, these questions, why they're raising these questions to the council. You can go back and look this stuff up, but the ones that don't want you to research or do, then they'll result to you're stupid, you're a liar. You know, like, come on, people, have respect for, for your, your colleagues up there. Every, like you said, we're optimistic that everyone cares. So you respect how those who care, how their way of caring. And their way of caring is asking questions for their constituents. Please give them an answer. What is wrong with that?
Yeah. And I think there's a difference. When I talked about not overvaluing collegiality and consensus, you know, there's a difference between overvaluing that and not showing any respect to your fellow council members or to the public as human beings. And you know, publicly accusing someone of being a liar or calling them stupid. There, there is no reason for anybody to do that to someone publicly. I mean, that, that's just really completely unacceptable. But also, I mean, some of the, some of the concerns lobbied against Claire Kelly, the fact that she takes so seriously this issue of the clawbacks and getting the city money back for investments that maybe did not go the way that we expected. First of all, you know, she says, you can look at the record, you can see that I've brought this up several times before. So you know, it's, it's not that I, that this is the first time I'm bringing it up. But even if it was the first time that she was bringing it up, if you feel that the city is on the brink of making a financial investment that could really hurt the city, even if you do discover some new information or a new idea at the last minute, why wouldn't you bring it up? That's a, that's a good thing as opposed to saying, well, you know, we talked about this a lot and, you know, maybe there's some concerns, but you know, you, you had the chance of bringing it up before and you didn't. So because you didn't bring it up before, we're going to plow ahead with a decision that could be financially ruinous? How is that respecting the people of Evanston? How is that being a good steward for the people of Evanston?
Exactly, exactly. I appreciated those questions because, I mean, we're getting off topic here. We're talking about the city manager position, but it all ties in together.
Yes, it does.
So the, the ARPA funds, Claire and Devon simply were saying, ARPA funds are for emergency, for the harm that has been done because of the pandemic. We need to take care of those who have been here and didn't survive it or are hanging on by a thread. Those who have been loyal and, and dedicated to Evanston, who have poured into Evanston, they are needing help. So they're getting called stupid because they're questioning giving two million dollars to a theater from Skokie that has tons of money. They have, they are not hurting for money. They have tons of money. They have millions. Okay, coming in and, and no one was saying, no, we don't want Northlight here. I think everyone's excited to have Northlight come here, but should they receive two million dollars?
Yeah.
ARPA funds, that was a legitimate question.
Yeah, is it, is it a good investment? Is it really the best investment for?
For ARPA.
And, and for ARPA. And, you know, frankly, whenever people, um, resort to name calling, calling somebody stupid, that generally means that you don't have a very good, strong argument. You know, I mean, you could push back and say, you know, I disagree with the point you're saying because of A, B, or C. But to simply call somebody stupid seems to suggest that you don't have anything better to say.
And then the misleading factor with, with the aux, of course, we want the aux to, to be here. But you're misleading the community into the whole, it's black owned.
Right, because it is black owned.
It isn't black owned, so you were misleading. And thank God for Devon for bringing forth the, the young black woman who, who had to come speak. And I know she was uncomfortable, but she was like, yes, it's a white lady. And we hope that we can get some black tenants who can of quote unquote afford.
Right.
To be at that location. That spoke volumes. So I was like, thank you. All, thank you, council member Reed for raising that question. And so, I mean, it goes back to the, the city manager position. You know, I, I, I would almost put money on, you had the same council members who were wanting it to be transparent, but what happened?
Yes.
What happened?
What happened? Yeah, and, you know, you had mentioned that it would be, it would be helpful if citizens as a whole really stayed on top of these things. But, you know, we understand that it's difficult for individual people to, to stay on top. I mean, people have jobs and families and all, and all this other sort of thing. Um, but, you know, at the very least, um, look at the newsletters that you get from your, your city council member. And if your city council member doesn't have meetings regularly and doesn't send out newsletters regularly, you know, you should call them on that because that's their responsibility. And we know that some city council members are much, much better about doing that than other city council members are. And, um, you know, there, um, I, I like to think that that's what Community Alliance for Better Government is trying to do. Um, we're working on report cards for city council members. So we'll look at significant votes that city council members took and kind of compare those votes to what our, what our organization values in terms of, again, government transparency and openness, and also prioritizing racial equity. So that people can see, oh, okay, it looks like this person really is voting for racial equity and for transparency more often, whereas some of these other council members are not doing that as much as we would like. So it's a way to sort of hold them accountable. Um, so there are ways to stay on top of this. But, um, you know, the thing is, you have to let them know when you feel that they're doing something good. You also have to let them know when you feel that they are failing to live up to our expectations. And as you said, this last city council election was very exciting. We got a lot of great new candidates in. There was a lot of energy. And we really need to know, are all of those newly elected city council members who ran on policies of transparency, ran on policies of being more responsive to the public, are they really holding up their end of the bargain? And, you know, I'd say it's kind of a, a mixed verdict so far.
Mayor, I think Mayor Bis, you know, just listening to people in the community, they really thought he was gonna be one way. And he has turned out to be the complete opposite of what I would say most of the community was really wanting. Um, so it, it just makes me wonder like, well, well, what's, what's really his agenda? Because, uh, you know, he had me fooled. I believe, I had no reason not to believe what he was saying. Um, but, you know, um, I felt, you know, Sebastian Als and, and Lori were definitely very speaking to my heart. Um, and, 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 you know, Bis had, Bis had the money behind him.
Yeah.
So, you know, we were hoping that he was gonna be true to all the things that he said. You know, when he won, like, well, let's fingers crossed, you know. But, uh, it's, it's, uh, it's uncomfortable.
It's a little, yeah, it's a little disappointing. You know, Sebastian, many of us were also hoping that, um, Sebastian would get on the city council. And, um, I, um, first of all, I would say that I'm very happy that we have Juan. I mean, I think Juan is gonna do a great job. And I do think it's really important to finally have, um, a Latin representative on the city council. But, uh, Sebastian has so much to offer, such a brilliant young man, such a strategic thinker, such a great writer and speaker. And I do really feel that we missed an opportunity, um, to get Sebastian in city government, either as a mayor or as a city council member. So I'm hoping that at some point, I mean, he's in his last year of college. So, you know, it's hope he decides to come back to Evanston and continues to be involved. Um, but, you know, this, um, it is a little disappointing, especially with what we're seeing now with the city manager and his complete non-responses to our questions about what the, what the process is and what's gonna be happening in the future. And so I hope that people will, in the same way that it's important to let the city council members know when you're disappointed. I hope that people will really do the same with the mayor and say, you know, we voted for you for a reason. And we need to see that you really are, again, holding up your end of the agreement.
Yeah, I think, uh, this is in the same situation. You would think he wouldn't be. But I, I believe that he is in the same situation as some of the new council members trying to feel their way. You know, around and, uh, you know, he may have come in really genuine about the people. And now he's trying to please.
Yeah, and, you know.
He's trying to please certain members of the council, not all, because he's, he's been kind of disrespectful to several of them. But, um, he's trying to please those that I believe is connected to the money that's gonna help him get to his next stage. I don't know. I don't know. That's just speculation.
I don't know. And, I mean, definitely, definitely head and shoulders above Hagerty. So grateful that Hagerty is no longer involved at all in city government.
Hey, but Hagerty would just straight tell you to your face, this is what he thinks regardless of how it came out. This, this kind of rise the fence and, you know, you know, he smiles, he smiles and then operates differently.
Um, so, you know, I think it's, again, it's just keeping the pressure on and saying, we expected more. We need to see that you're doing more than just paying lip service to transparency and to racial equity issues. And I think, you know, it's gonna be really important for us to, to keep our eyes on that in terms of how the report on the lakefront abuses, how the recommendations are gonna be implemented. There've been a lot of, I think, very vague words about that, but, um, there are a lot of questions that remain unanswered. And, you know, the other thing that really makes me nervous about the city manager search is that that person will be leading the search for a police chief. And that is a crucial position. And do we, you know, we, we definitely, we don't want a new city manager who is not really going to take um, the city's history of racial abuse in police custody into, into account when looking for a new city manager. Um, I have a lot of questions about how previous police chiefs have, um, used the NIPUS, the kind of private policing organization to harass Northwestern students who were protesting. We have a lot of questions about Eddington's casual reference to using drones. Uh, the sort of incidents that involve the graduate student that was beaten up by Evanston Police. The, um, the group of Evanston little boys and teenagers who were arrested and put in handcuffs because they were riding their bicycles dangerously. This is not ancient history. This is all history from just a few years ago. And I really wanna know that we are gonna get a police chief who is aware of this, who is committed to ending these kind of abuses, who's, who's committed to ending the racially disparate stopping and frisking of young African-American men. Because, you know, if we're saying that we want Evanston to be a livable city, it has to be a livable city for everyone. And it is not a livable city for young black people if they know that their police department is not concerned about stopping these sort of abuses. So, super important for us to be on the city council and on this about making sure that there's a city manager who understands that and who's committed to getting a police chief that understands that.
Yes, I used to hear, uh, many complaints about, uh, Chief Eddington. Um, you know, uh, young boys being arrested and it'd be one black boy in, in the group. And so they would call the parents of the, the white individuals, say, you know, come get your, come get him, he was doing this, whatever, whatever. But arrest.
He looks like he's from a good family.
Right. And, and arrests, you know, arrests the, the young black man, so.
Well, and, you know, Eddington, both, um, both of our previous, um, police chiefs were big fans of the gang database concept. And Eddington had talked pop, pop, had talked publicly about how he, he really admired the city of Chicago's gang database. And he wanted to make use of that as a tool. And as we know, the gang databases do not use any kind of objective standard or for, or criteria for putting somebody in the gang database. It's pretty much all black and Latinx young men. And often it's just someone who knew somebody who was thought to be in a gang or is a cousin or brother of someone who was thought to be in a gang. And so just the fact that he would talk about what a great tool that is, that tells you that this is somebody who does not understand, uh, the dangers of racial profiling and racialized policing and how that destroys lives and how that makes the city unlivable for people of color. So that type of attitude needs to be rooted out completely, root and branch. There is absolutely no reason to tolerate anybody who believes in that kind of policing.
Yes, and we need a new city manager that understands that through and through.
Yes.
Uh, but unfortunately, we're not gonna have much input in that. They're gonna wind it down to two or three and say this, okay, let us know what you think.
Well, so what we know so far, again, thanks to Jonathan Nusma, is that there will, there, there've been, you know, there's been a couple of cullings already. You know, I mean, one thing that I really wanna know is, um, you know, we know that seventy-five people applied. Do we know what the demographic breakdown was? So how many candidates of color did they get? How many women did they get? What parts, what parts of the country were these people from? Cause I think, you know, that can kind of tell you a lot, um, if you know what sort of a city environment somebody worked in. You know, just how, how much experience they have with working on these issues of racial equity and economic disparity. Um, but we do know that on, um, April twenty-second, the council is supposed to be doing second interviews with four candidates. So, you know, today is April fifteenth, so we have a week to get to our city council members, to call them and email them and say, okay, are you taking into account? Do you have in front of you all the information from the public from the last search about what people prioritize? And how are you gonna be talking to these candidates about implementing racial equity throughout the city and all departments? And what are your plans for a police chief? What are you looking for in a police chief? And how are you gonna make sure that we get a police chief who is going to prioritize racial equity in policing? And who is not gonna continue with the same type of racialized policing that we've seen in the past? So people listening, you have a week to get to your city council members and tell them that those are your priorities.
Yes, please do, please do, please do. Cause let me tell you, those, people like yourself, Leslie, um, eventually you kind of get uh, consumed and, and kind of burnt out. And, 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 yeah, because the, the fight is real, because you're actually fighting for your neighbors. You're fighting for a community, um, for those who are fearful of coming forth or, or they don't have that kind of energy, that kind of fight, that kind of fire in them to, um, you know, send those emails, call, go to city council, listen to city. You don't even have to go to city council anymore. You can like watch it live on YouTube.
Right.
Comfort of your own home, just so that you know what's happening out there. Um, but, but people need to realize when people are out here sticking their neck out there for the community, uh, sometimes you get blackballed.
It'll happen.
It happens, it happens. Um, and then sometimes we take it in, I know I have internally to the point, uh, you know, that I'm not well physically because I care so much and not enough is happening. You know, to let these council members, these city officials know, no, that's wrong. And you won't, you can't even get me started on Evanston reparations because that, that send me through the freaking roof. I think that's when I totally lost faith in, um, Mayor Bis. But, uh, uh, because it spoke volumes. Um, peo- people need to help. It's power in numbers. It's power in numbers. It can't be the same people that you're relying on to go out there and, and speak.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And this, you know, I mean, we could sit here for hours just getting into reparations. I mean, I've, I've been interviewed at least five times about reparations, including by The Guardian, which was, was really kind of interesting that people in England are reading about what's going on with Evanston reparations. But, um, I think for a, a lot of these issues come down to, um, certain people in Evanston, let's just be honest, a lot of white liberal people in Evanston are overly proud and overly self-satisfied about living in such a diverse community, such a liberal community. You know, you'll hear, oh, well, you know, we, we could have moved to Glenview or Womato or Weneka, but we chose to be in Evanston because we wanted to be in a liberal community. We want it to be in a diverse community. Um, but, you know, when it comes to actually standing in solidarity with people of color in your community, with low-income people in your community, I don't see that much commitment, honestly. You know, when I see all these beautiful North Shore houses with their, with their little Black Lives Matter signs in front. I always wanna ask, so does it really, so do Black Lives Matter more than you having a lower property tax bill? You know, do Black Lives Matter more than your kid getting into advanced placement classes? So they have a better chance of getting into a good college than black kids and brown kids? Do, do Black Lives Matter that much to you? Do Black Lives Matter enough so that you would expand your concept of safety? And think about how having heavily, heavily aggressive policing that make you feel safe or making black people feel unsafe? What does Black Lives Matter honestly mean to you? Does Black Lives Matter enough that you're going to look at developments in Evanston and really make sure that there's gonna be enough affordable housing so that black people who have lived here for generations can continue to afford to live in Evanston? If Black Lives really matter, what are you willing to give up? What about your elitist, entitled, privileged white lifestyle? Are you willing to give up to show that Black Lives Matter? That's what I wanna know.
Girl, what ward do you live in?
The seventh.
You need to run, cause that's, that's, that's something that people need to hear. They need to know that someone actually cares.
Well, I think, you know, we all, we all take on different roles. Um, I would not be a good politician. I would not be a good, um, a good city council member. Um, I think some of us really are better in the gab fly role and better in the, you know, the voice crying in the wilderness role. And that seems to be, seems to be my role. So it's great being able to get on shows like this and to talk with you. It's great to, you know, kind of push that conversation through the Community Alliance for Better Government. And, you know, just by, I send out a lot of annoying emails to my friends and relatives. I know a lot of them are always thinking, oh, God, another email of Leslie. But, yeah, I mean, somebody really needs to do that and just make it, you know, just make it crystal clear what is at stake here. I mean, for, I mean, you know this, a lot of African-American families do not feel that they can still live in Evanston, either because of financial reasons or because you have a police chief who uses a gang database against their kids. You know, so if we, people that want this diverse Evanston, you have to put up something to make sure that that diverse Evanston is going to continue to be a reality.
Hmm, hmm. And examples of it in, in our leadership, um, I won't say the we're all human, we're all human, so I shouldn't say I've lost faith in, in Mayor Bis because we're human. Uh, one minute you could be doing amazing things and the next minute turn around and do something so that you, so out of character, something you never in a million years would have thought, would have come out of this person's mouth. But, um, just in our leadership, we need, we need to see examples of, of caring. of, of caring. And um, and I think a lot of people did lose faith in Melissa Nguyen when she accused Devon during the whole lakefront thing. And she wasn't, and she didn't, she didn't apologize for that. So here's this privileged you know, some will consider her privileged white woman. You know, attacking this, this young black man who didn't deserve it. It was totally out of left field and Mayor Bis did not require an apology. It was if, so what? You know, so that's become the culture of our city council. And, and it speaks to, eventually it speaks to the community.
I mean, as regarding um, council member, when there's a difference between losing faith in someone and never having any faith in them at all. And that's all I'll say about that. Um, but uh, you know, I mean, talking about um, reparations and are being disappointed in people in reparations. Um, if, again, if you truly feel that Black Lives Matter and you truly feel that reparations are important, why are so few people really pushing for reparations to be fully integrated into the city budget, something that we budget for long-term, that we're not just saying, oh, we'll give them some money if we sell a little bit more weed, then we'll give them money. You know, it should be something where you do a full accounting of all of the people that are affected, you know, not just people that still live in Evanston. You know, I saw your great interview with Craig Wimberly the other day. You know, somebody who, if we were truly doing a reparations program, should be getting it, but is not eligible simply because he doesn't live in Evanston anymore. Um, so you know, it's this half-hearted liberal, we feel good about ourselves because we're the first city to come up with a reparations program. And yet not really following through on it, not really saying, you know, let's look at what are the, the long-term implications of this? And how, if we're going to call it reparations, how are we fully addressing the harms and making sure that we fully repay to everybody who was harmed by redlining at Evanston, not just, you know, a handful of people. And not doing it through the institutions that harmed them in the first place, the real estate, the real estate and the banking industries. And it's that, that unwillingness to really dig into what reparations actually means as opposed to something that just makes you feel good as a white person because you live in a liberal community like Evanston. That's what really angers me and I think you and a lot of other people in Evanston.
Yes. I can't, well, people have heard my, all of my, they've read my articles, they, you know, everything I, I feel about Evanston reparations and unfortunately, you know, it's a strong PR machine that makes this and city council look good, so they're not gonna do anything to stop it. It's become a business opportunity for the most part, for some. Um, and the rest.
Well, and you know, I think, um, you know, I mean, those council members, they were voted for by certain people and um, what was really disheartening, listening to um, the data on it, the debate on it, when um, the, the ordinance was finally passed and you were one of the people that spoke, I remember. Um, but hearing white people accuse people like you and me who were criticizing the reparations program of oh, being just like the, the black people who stood against Martin Luther King. You know, as though we're somehow traitors because we're saying this program is not really what it sounds like, is not really what it's supposed to be. Uh, that was absolutely infuriating, but you know, it is reflective of, of a certain attitude that you hear, not just about reparations, but about, for example, the fifth ward school. Um, there are legitimate arguments to make either way about having a fifth ward school. But I have had more than one conversation with a, with a long-term liberal white Evanston, somebody who likes to talk about how they marched with King or whatever back in the day, that ends with saying about the fifth ward school, I just don't understand what you people want.
Oh, did she say that to King?
Yeah, right. To hear a white person say, you know, I don't know what you want. And it's the idea that I'm this liberal white person. I'm so proud that I moved to a place like Evanston that desegregated its schools voluntarily. And giving me new information about how some of that integration perhaps harmed African-American children. How the brunt of the integration was born by African-American children because that conflicts with your idea of this being this, this wonderful progressive community. And then to strike out at black people who say, you know, we really think our kids deserve a neighborhood school. To not be willing to actually listen to them, to say, I don't know what you people want. Are you listening? Because I think people are telling you what they want and telling you why that's important. And that those black lives should matter to you more than your self-image of being this entitled, titled liberal who marched with King.
Hmm, hmm. And yeah, and I had some tell me, um, this Evanston reparations dressed as, you know, a, a, a housing program, you should just be happy with what you get.
What you can get.
Supported. It's a start. Just be happy that you're getting that. So that alone lets you know it's not right.
The table. So, um, I, I remember I did a presentation at um, my synagogue a couple of years ago. And you know, there's a passage in the Old Testament, the Hebrew scriptures that um, talks about the Jubilee and talks about how the poor are given the gleanings, the leftovers in the field and how there's a corner of the field that she set aside for the poor. And it's presented as this really progressive thing that, you know, you give the poor people the gleanings and the corners. But it's essentially saying, we're gonna give the people the leftovers. We're gonna give them the squash grapes and the muddy corner of the field that nobody else wanted and tell ourselves that we're really a liberal progressive community by doing that. And you know, that might've seemed progressive five thousand years ago, but I think in Evanston in twenty-twenty-two, we can go beyond just giving poor people and black people the squash grapes in the corners. You know, we deserve more than gleanings. And I think that anybody who thinks this reparations program is a great, is a great deal, they're stuck back in that five thousand years ago mindset of, let's just give them the gleanings, let's just give them the leftovers. And we're not ready to sit around and just wait for leftovers anymore.
Yeah, and unfortunately, uh, you have some black leadership that's like, just take it. Just take it. Matter of fact, I'm gonna turn it into a business.
Yes. Well, we won't, I won't mention any.
We won't go there.
But, um, you know, I mean, it's, I don't, I don't have any quarrel with people who participated in the lottery and who said, well, you know, this is a chance for me to get something. I'm old, my, you know, I have a house, you know.
No one's trying to stop anyone from getting a housing program, getting home improvements. I mean, that should just have been something that, you know, could have come through the ARPA funds. How about that?
There you go.
Come through ARPA funds.
And that's what we did anyway.
Yeah, instead of dressing it as this is your reparations.
Yeah, it's the, it's the letting people off the hook for true reparations. It's saying that, you know, because we gave you these gleanings, because you know, we gave fifteen people this housing voucher, that that's enough, you know, and that's, that's not enough. That's not what reparations is. It's not acknowledging, we owe a lot of people, you know, even people that don't still live in Evanston, we owe a lot of people reparations to really try to, I mean, I haven't seen, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong. I know Dino Robinson has done a lot of great research on um, the redlining that happened, but I haven't seen an actual number of, okay, let's, let's estimate how much money was stolen from the black community during those decades. Because I think people need to see that, so that, you know, cause otherwise ten million dollars, oh, that sounds so generous. That's just a pittance compared to how much money was taken out of our community. So I think we really need to see that and people need to confront that and say, this is what we're dealing with. This is what we owe to the black community of Evanston and black people who used to live in Evanston. And I don't see them doing that.
And I think the new school is a, is a form of real reparations back into the fifth ward. That is what you call a gift that keeps on giving, a harm that is repaired. And it's gonna give for generations to come. That is a form of reparations. Uh, this home improvement, get a bank loan. Nothing about that says I wanna repair what, what happened. Nothing about that says that to me is just a money-making opportunity for either the city, either CIPA uh, and certain city officials and, and others connected to them. Um, but by all means, no one wants to say, you know, please don't help our seniors to have home improvement. That was never the situation. We just didn't want you to dress it as their reparations. Just say it's a housing program, use the ARPA funds. Yes.
Exactly, exactly.
But Leslie, I am gonna let you go. We were supposed to do thirty minutes and we have done an hour. Recording time ran out. We had to start another recording time, but it is always a pleasure speaking with you. Um, I love speaking to people where I learn different things, even if, you know, we don't agree on a lot of things. Much, much of what you put out there, I, I am totally in tune with. I get it and agree with, so. Um, but I always, you know, hear a little bit more information, another way of thinking about something. So it's always a pleasure.
And it's, it's always, um, you do so much for this community and I'm glad you're finally getting the recognition you deserve for bringing these, these issues to such a wide range of people. So I'm really thankful. And just wanna say that if people wanna find out more about the report card that the Community Alliance for Better Government is working on, our meetings, you can go to EvanstonAlliance.com. That's our website, or you can just Google Community Alliance for Better Government. And you can see the issues that we're working on, uh, the statements we've made about things like the city manager's search. We're gonna be coming out with a statement about um, the lakefront and how we hope that these resolutions, these, these resolutions will be implemented. And we have regular meetings that you can come to as well, or if you've got too many meetings, you can just get our newsletter. So that is one simple way that people in Evanston can get more informed and more involved.
Thank you for that. Thank you to Community Alliance for Better Government. Thank you so much for all, all of you all's work, your research and, and sticking your neck out there for those who don't wanna come forward. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Bye, Malika.
All right, bye-bye. Okay, that was Leslie Williams. You all be sure to uh, get in touch with her, uh, send questions. Um, learn more about their organization, get involved, people. Don't wake up too late. You know, we're always talking about this woke society. Well, you got a lot of people out here that wake up just to, just too late, too late. Things have already gone down. And for instance, the city manager position. We've been sleep on that and they have been moving. And it is very, very important that they hire the right person and Leslie just laid it all out as to why. So get in touch with her, get in touch with the organization, read their newsletter if you don't have time to go to the meetings. And just stay engaged, people, and ask questions. Ask questions. Stay tuned for more.